We call it tonight's meeting to order at 6:30, the meeting of December 17th. We'll begin tonight's meeting with invocation by Rabbi Michael Simon from Temple Beth Kodesh, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag led by Commissioner Casello. Please rise.
Almighty God, Master of the Universe, we ask your blessings for our city, for its government, for its leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. May they minister all affairs fairly, so that peace and security, happiness and prosperity, justice and freedom may forever abide in our midst. Almighty God, grant our mayor, our commission, and all those assembled here the ability to always be aware of your presence and conduct their work accordingly. Bless them with good health, wisdom, compassion, good cheer, and good fellowship. May they constantly realize that in laboring for the enactment of just laws, they are doing your will. Guide their deliberations that they may govern this great city with wisdom and justice, grace and compassion, bringing honor to your name and your blessing to humankind. May they come to your work with a vision of a stronger and better Boynton Beach. May they always have the strength to lead our community toward that vision by their words, decisions, and actions. And may they have the strength to lead, even if their leadership makes people not always happy with them. And let us say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rabbi Simon, we want to thank you for taking the time to do the invocation. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. Now, if you'd like to join me in the brand statement, it's time to take a look at Boynton Beach. Its energetic downtown revival emanates from the busy Boynton Beach Harbor Marina docks to the community's storied heart and soul. Thank you. We'll go for agenda approval. Any additions, adoptions, or corrections to the agenda? I would like to pull Item B under consent agenda, so approve the Recreation Parks Department's strategic plan. Wally Majors would like to give a brief presentation on that item, so we're going to pull that from consent. Item B under consent, the strategic plan for Parks and Rec. We're going to have a real short presentation on that. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
A move.
Have a most second all in favor.
Aye.
Show the most is unanimous. It'll take us to informational items by a member of the City Commission. I'll start tonight with Commissioner Casello.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of meetings this past couple of weeks. I met with the Redevelopment Management Associates, better known as RMA. They're a, in fact, it's the company that just got the contract to privatize the CRA up in West Palm Beach. I had a little conference with Mr. Brown, Christopher Brown, who's a partner in that company. I also had a meeting with La Sissy, I think, I think that's how you pronounce it, Mr. Tom Hayden. He's the project manager for the project that's going on down at the 500 Ocean Ave. And we had a nice talk there about communications and being kept into the loop so we can keep this project on track. Also, it was a busy last couple of weeks as many of the commissioners here attended many events, from the FBL lighting of a vets' house to the ribbon cutting of Hurricane Grill and Wings. We had plenty of food there. The one I'd like to really talk about is the chamber luncheon that we went to. And we were entertained by a group from the Boynton Beach Community High School. Go by the Dimensional Harmony. And it's led by Mr. Sterling Frederick. And it's a, it's a group of 50 students at Boynton High who are members of this choir. And they've been on, I believe, the Tonight Show. They've been, they've sung at Carnegie Hall. And if you ever had the opportunity to listen to these, to these young adults, you've got to listen to them. It brought a tear or two to my eyes, which Commissioner Fitzpatrick's wife caught me. Excuse me, but I wasn't ashamed of it. And in closing, I'd just like to say, we had the, I don't want to call it a privilege, but we did attend a memorial service for a fallen Boynton firefighter the other day, Jeffrey Kittenbacher. I think I'm pronouncing that right. And I just want to say to the Chief Carter and to the men and women of Boynton Fire Department, Chief, I've attended many of these ceremonies in the course of my 33 years of firefighting. It's never a pleasant thing. And your ceremony of gift of life that you put on yesterday was second to none. I've been to New York, Boston, Washington, and it was, it was, it was a real heart-wrenching, bring a tear to your eye. And that's the way you send your comrades off. And I just want to say thank you to you and the men and women of the Boynton Fire Department for making that happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Merker.
Karice, where are you? She's right over here. I just want everybody to know, if by some chance we see Karice scooting out of here, her ma's coming in today. It's that special, so don't be offended. Number two. Where do I, how do I say it? We are that lucky. That lucky. We have Police Chief Jeffrey Katz. I had the privilege the other night of listening him articulate, explain to people from his heart, from his mind, about a subject matter that I was taken back with a litter on until I heard him speak. And that's the subject matter of smart water. He explained, he touched the people there at this meeting, and they came to me afterwards and said, "God, are we lucky to have a police chief who has a heart and soul and is there for the people." And I thank you. Number three. Holiday season, feeling good all over, but I have to thank a special group of people. I'm on the commission now, what is it, about eight months? The city employees of Boynton Beach have been that meaningful, caring, and wonderful to yours truly, David Merker. They've helped me, they sat down with me, they had the patience, and I'm not easy, to explain and educate me in so many different ways. I don't know how to thank all of you. Their job is not an eight-hour job, it's a 24/7 job. And we, the people, we, the commission, I, I have to say, "I," I'm sorry, appreciate all of you that much. And lastly, being of the Jewish persuasion, I emphatically, indubitably, and definitely like saying and want to say Merry Christmas to all. I may be politically incorrect, and I may be written up for being politically incorrect, but too bad, Merry Christmas, and I enjoy it, and all of those who want to give me a present, I'm ready. So, thank you, Merry Christmas.
Vice Mayor Hay.
Your gift is in the mail.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to tell the people. What's your game?
I'd just like to ditto everything that's been said so far, but in addition to that, I had the opportunity to meet with Chief Jeffrey Katz and the City Manager Lori Laveri with a group of community persons and rubbers about bringing safety to our community. And I'm very excited about what I heard, the, those ministers and those city people doing in our community. It started off by talking about buyback to guns, but it has expanded beyond that because that didn't work out the way we wanted it to. But now, there's another effort on making our city a safer place. And then my hat's off to you and continue the good work, Chief. We did on, on December 4th, that Wednesday, the Florida Power and Light Soldier Thomas Family, we had that lighting decoration of her house that many of you saw on TV. That was just phenomenal. The smile on those kids' face when they saw those presents and the light was, can't describe it. Also, the ribbon cutting about the grill and wings has already been discussed. I would like to mention that we had the 44th Annual Tri-City Barbecue in Belle Glade. This is an annual event that is put on by the cities out in Belle Glade, Pahokee, and other cities, for the, all of the city officials of Palm Beach County. And it was well, well-attended, and they do know how to cook. Also, the Christmas, I guess that was the Christmas parade that we had, that was on the 7th, wasn't it? Yeah. And I had the opportunity of attending my last one for a while. The next person that you'll probably see in that seat is probably sitting in this room. But I just want to let you know that it's been an activity that I take my hat off to and I thoroughly, thoroughly enjoy it. I don't, I think that's about it for right now. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Feliz Navidad, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy Hanukkah, and all those others. Thank you.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
You forgot to wonder soulless.
Oh, okay.
Since the last meeting, I attended, like everybody else here, the holiday parade and pre-lighting. I went to a Palm Beach League of Cities luncheon at Atlantis where there was a lot of, about 25 other elected city officials from neighboring municipalities. And then I went to Chamber of Commerce Luncheon, which has also been discussed. And then the, that night was a DEC holiday party. I was shanghaied into being the holiday boat parade judge, which I now see that it's better to be like Joe and Wedro here and get a front-row seat, but not have any responsibilities.
Hard work.
Yeah. You gotta, gotta keep your eyes open there. And then, like most everybody else up here, I attended the funeral for firefighter Jeff Kinbacher. He's somebody I went through fire school with, and we were hired together when Fire Station 3 was opened. So, we didn't always agree on some political issues or medical issues, but he was a good guy, and it's a shame he had to die so young. And then I've done two visits to the city library to see the library archivist, archivist, I don't know, however you pronounce it. Her name's Susan, and I'm not even trying pronouncing her last name. But I went with resident Gary Fishman, who has a scrapbook from the 1960s of newspaper articles about Warren G. Grimes, who was once a resident of Boynton Beach area and reported the third richest man in America. He is the one that dredged out Lake Ida and had a, had a lot to do with the four acres at the north end of Lake Ida Park that I am working to keep as a passer park and greenway connection. We spent about four hours high-rise scanning, high-resolution, so that might come in handy somewhere down the road, and it's good history of Boynton area. Monday, Lori took me to these chambers here to see the promotion and swearing-in of three new police sergeants. They are an important part of future direction of the Boynton Beach Police Department, and I extend my congratulations. And finally, for those keeping track, at FAU, my final grades are B-, Structural Steel Design, B for Senior Design, and B+ for Reinforced Concrete Design. And I am never, ever taking three courses in a semester again.
City Manager, did you have any?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Casello already mentioned Dimensional Harmony, which is a choir from the Boynton Beach High School that entertained us. These kids are just absolutely fantastic. They've won national awards, they've been to Carnegie Hall. There are currently 60 choirs across the United States were chosen to be reviewed to be, find, there now is a contest to find the best choir in the United States, high school choir in the United States. Of the 60, they've eliminated down to 17 choirs are left. Dimensional Harmony is one of those 17 still competing. These kids, I'm telling you, when you see them, Boynton Beach has to be really proud. All dressed up in their tuxedos and gowns, and they just look beautiful. And the voices, like you say, will do something to you. And one of the thoughts we had after watching them, many of these children come from very low-income families, and I was wondering, and I don't know how to go about this, so I'm throwing it out there to see if anybody can come back, give me an idea, but I was thinking, you know, there's some cost to them, they're giving their all for this city. And I was just wondering if some local businesses might want to give, for the young ladies, maybe some free hair appointments, you know, to take care of their hair. Maybe they're dry-clean, I know who pays for all those gowns and tuxedos getting dry-clean, there's lots of that. And maybe even dental, maybe there's some dentals, dentists would come together, maybe offer some free dental. Those are just the three things I thought of that might help some of these kids, because they're giving their all, maybe we can give something back to them. So, just a thought. The second thing was, last night I attended a ribbon cutting for a new business down at Marina Village, right there where you turn in to go to Banana Bo's, called Bellagio Furniture. And it's, it's all handmade furniture out of Italy, if anybody's interested. They, you order the furniture, they hand-make it in Italy, and then they ship it in to you. So, I just wanted, we do have another new business in the downtown area. Was glad to see them come in. The last thing I have is, last week I attended the third police chief's open house at Leisureville. And it was very, very good, it was very well-received, but one of the issues they brought up was road striping. They're very concerned about the, they say, one of the big ones was the intersection at Congress and Wilbright. They said they can't see the lines anymore, they're having trouble at night seeing the lines. And they also talked about, of course, the striping in Leisureville. So, I would like to ask the city manager to work with, they said, "Can we get some feedback, you know, what are you, we'd like to hear what you're going to do about?" So, I told them I would look into it. So, I'd like the city manager to work with Mr. Livergood, if we could get a schedule of when the county, when the county does those and when the city does our part, because I know some are county roads, some are city roads. You can give it to us later, you don't need to do it now, but I'd like to get that so I can give it, bring, give them some answers back, which we promised to do. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Mayor, can I say something, please?
Yes.
I have met with Commissioner Abrams. I'm meeting this week with other commissioners. I was told originally that the striping was supposed to be completed October 15th. Obviously, it's past that date. So, I will be meeting this week with one commissioner, the following week with another two commissioners. So, I'd like, I will follow up on that, and it's an important issue for the city, safety, security. So, I just wanted to throw that in.
Any else?
Yes, a couple items that I wanted to mention about was the Moms Night Out that was put on by the Schoolhouse Children Museum and Learning Center. I stopped by there just to see how things were going, and while I was there, it didn't seem to be too well-attended. I don't know how it turned out. I haven't heard any report, but at the time I was there, it was very few people there. So, maybe we ought to try and help them out or beat that up on the next time they put that on. Lastly, I was out at the Holiday Inn area, I guess on Congress Avenue, and had the opportunity of being out there to celebrate Mrs. Hilda Gertmann Pitts. She was 100 years old. She had some of her friends there. They sat them down in chairs along the wall, and our gracious mayor came out and read a proclamation, but he had to leave. But at the end, Mayor, they sat these six ladies across the back, and everybody was greeting them. So, I went over and started asking and inquiring about the age of each one of them. And some were 97, 95, 90, and all this kind of stuff. And so, out of the six, I added up all the ages, okay? And it came to 566. And when you divide that by six, you get over 94 years of age. And the great thing was, the one, the young lady, I call her a young lady, on the end got up and started dancing. So, I went over to her and said, "What is your secret?" So, she just said, "Living good and praising God." But I just thought I'd share that with you. It was fantastic.
Vice Mayor Hay. In the future, never ask a woman her age. Good point.
At that point, they don't mind.
Okay, if there's no more comments, we'll move to announcements, the community's special events, presentations. I have three proclamations this evening. The first one is Talking Words Month, and I'll ask Jennifer Ray to join me at the, down there, I'll read the proclamation. Ms. Ray is the Violence Prevention Coordinator for the Aid to Victims of Domestic Abuse in Palm Beach County. So, it's a nonprofit organization, so she's here to accept this proclamation. Whereas, under the laws of all 50 states, the District of Columbia and the federal government's stalking is a crime. And whereas 3.4 million people over the age of 18 are stalked each year in the United States, and nearly 75% of victims are stalked by someone they know. And whereas three in four women killed by an intimate partner have been stalked by that intimate partner. And whereas many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. And whereas many stalkers use increasingly sophisticated devices, such as global positioning systems, cameras, and computer spyware to track their victims. Whereas Aid to Victims of Domestic Abuse, Inc., and Legal Aid Society of Palm Beach County continue their project to better combat stalking by coordinating a multidisciplinary response of local agencies and organizations, and by increasing victim services. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, proclaim the month of January 2014 as Stalking Awareness Month. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 17th day of December 2013. Ms. Ray, we thank you for your work, and if you'd like to say something, you'd be more than welcome.
Thank you very much. I just want to also point out that this is in addition to your support of our services doing violence prevention work at the Boynton Beach Community High School, where I am aware of Dimensional Harmony and their great work. I want to thank Chief Katz for our newly-formed work together and the community around the issue of stalking, and the support of the city of Boynton Beach to address this issue in your community. Thank you so much for your time.
The next proclamation is for National Drug Facts Week, and I'd like to ask Lance Corporal Caden Bulley to join me here. Whereas, communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there's hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marines of Palm Beaches to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the National Drug Facts Week was established to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas a Health Observation Week is planned for teens with aim of shattering myths about drugs and drug abuse through community-based events and activities on the web. On TV and through contests, young Marines of the Palm Beaches partner with National Institute on Drug Abuse to encourage teens to get factual answers from scientific experts about drugs and drug abuse. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, proclaim January 27th through February 2nd, 2014 as National Drug Facts Week. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed in Boynton Beach, Florida, the 17th day of December 2013. Lance Corporal, we appreciate your work, and we thank you for all you do, and if you'd like to say something.
Thank you.
The next proclamation is the 25th anniversary of the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County. And accepting is Dr. Juan
Weewora.
Weewora. Thank you, appreciate the help there. Whereas, the Florida Legislature passed the Palm Beach County Healthcare Act on July 11th, 1987, and the voters of Palm Beach County approved the act in a referendum on November 8th, 1988, to establish the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County. Whereas, the Healthcare District provides lifesaving care to more than 3,000 severely-injured trauma patients through its nationally-recognized trauma system. Whereas, the Healthcare District provides healthcare services to 174,000 students in 170 school clinics, operates the county's only public hospital, Lakeside Medical Center in Belle Glade, provides skilled nursing and rehabilitation to residents of the Edward J. Healy Rehabilitation and Nursing Center, and offers adult and pediatric care at C.L. Brumbach Primary Care Clinics. Whereas, the Healthcare District provides lifesaving care to more than 3,000 severely-injured trauma patients, extends health coverage to nearly 40,000 uninsured residents, enables uninsured expectant mothers to receive more than 70,000 services from doctors and other healthcare providers. Whereas, the city of Boynton Beach congratulates the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County on its continued service ensuring access to a comprehensive healthcare system and the delivery of quality services for the residents of Palm Beach County. Now therefore, I, Jerry Taylor, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, recognize the healthcare of Palm Beach County's 25th anniversary. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be fixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, on the 17th day of December 2013. Thank you so much for all you do, would you like to speak?
And on behalf of the Healthcare District Board and the staff of the Healthcare District, I would like to thank you all for this recognition. We look forward to another 25 years of serving the community, and we did bring some handouts that talk about our services that we've left out back for anyone who might need to access them. So, again, thank you very much for the honor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say something about the Healthcare District. As somebody who's taken hundreds of patients to the Delray Medical Center Trauma Center, I'd just like to say that it is an important asset to Palm Beach County, and I truly believe that if Princess Di had had that car accident in Palm Beach County, she'd still be alive because of the Healthcare District.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is to announce the Economic Development Workshop for the City Commission and the CRA Board. It will be held on January 29th, 2014. That's it, I think, for the announcements, and we'll now move to public audience. Anybody wish to address the commission on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask you to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and try to make your comments in a three-minute time period.
Good evening. My name is Michael Byrd, president of East Boynton Wildcats, 7107 Pinehurst Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33426. I'm here to I'm here tonight, last time I was here in October, I gave a recap up until October where we were with Breast Cancer Month in our season. So I want to give a brief recap at the end of our season here. We had a total of eight teams from ages four to fifteen, and out of those eight teams, five of those teams played in our league Super Bowl this year. So out of those five teams, we had two teams actually win the Super Bowl in our league. So when you win the Super Bowl in our league, you get invited to play in the national championship, which you go to Tampa for a week, and you play against teams all over the United States. So our kids went up to Tampa last week for a week, so I want to apologize, that's the reason why we weren't in the holiday parade this year, because we were up in Tampa. So our eight-and-under team came in fourth place out of sixteen teams in the division, and our ten-and-under team, some of the kids are here tonight, first place, national champion. So our kids were gone for a week, but they also had the time to spend with their coaches and do homework during that week. They had to play a total of four games to get to that championship, and then won that championship. And they all have on their national championship jackets and their national championship ring.
Whoa. Thank you very much. We are so proud that you've represented your city and yourselves in a most exemplary manner. We're also very proud of you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. And Chief, I know you like the Steelers, and they're not going to get one this year, so we got it for you.
Goodness, that's a hard act to follow.
Yes, I know. Good evening.
Very proud. My name is Janet Morgano, and my address is eight-oh-three Northeast Third Street here in Boynton Beach. I wanted to bring something to your attention. First of all, I'm on disability from four back surgeries, and thank the Lord, they've all been successful. But I'm here for the single parents, the people on disability, and who are living paycheck to paycheck. I speak for them all. It's about the water bills. Earlier this year, I noticed in July, in September, and now in December, I'm getting two bills, in the beginning of the month and at the end of the month. And when I call customer service, they tell me that you're short on meter readers, so that's why... I don't know if all of us, but I know I am getting hit with two bills in one month. And that's very difficult when you're on a limited budget, and you've got other bills. So I'm hoping that some way, somehow, things could change, or it could be changed, because I asked for a change of date, but I'm still, you get hit with the late fee. So you're kind of darned if you do and darned if you don't.
Well, I'm glad you brought it to our attention. We'll definitely look into that. You should get one bill a month, I wouldn't know why. There's two, but we'll definitely look into it. We have your address and your name, and I'm sure the city manager will follow up, we'll look into that, and get back to you.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you.
And Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just for a point of information, I think the, I've had a talk with the city manager, because I did get a couple of emails about the billing of water bills, and I think they're in the process of revamping on how they send them out, and maybe the city manager can expand just a little more on that.
You know, if you get more than one notice, sometimes it's a reminder notice possibly, or, you know, I have Tim, he can speak to that. But I know, the way our bills were reading, it would show like a billing date, and then not really showing a very clear-cut due date, and when it's considered past due, and when you'll be assessed a ten-dollar late fee. So we're changing the language on there, so it's just very plain and clear. Requires, we have sixteen cycles, we can't change your billing time because of, we have over thirty-some-on-thousand customers, so we stick to a very strict cycle to get all the customers covered. But over the next thirty days, you're going to see a change in the template of the water bill. But I have your address, and we'll all check with our customer service billing to see what the situation. You shouldn't be getting one, more than one bill for water usage unless it's a reminder notice of some sort, but we'll certainly check it out and make some contact with you.
Okay, and it is, it's like on the third of the month, and then it goes to like the thirtieth of the month, and they're both due in the same month, so that kind of...
Yeah.
We'll look into that.
We'll follow up, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Anyone else need to address the commission at this time? Seeing none? My time is up.
But you can't leave.
Okay, we'll move on then to administrative. I need to appoint eligible members of the community to serve on vacant positions on the city advisory boards. The first one that I see tonight is the Building Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and Vice Mayor Hay, you have a regular appointment, and there's two people, Michael Basell and Timothy Rory are both currently on the board asking for reappointment.
I'd like to appoint Michael Basell.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you have a regular appointment. Timothy Rory, who is also a current member, asking for reappointment.
So moved.
Most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Merker, Cemetery Board, you have a regular appointment, and William Bone, who is a current member, is asking for reappointment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Next, Education and Youth Advisory Board, first one is Mayor, Vice Mayor Hay, you have a regular, Mary Moriera, who's on the current board. The next two are all on the current board regular, so Mary Moriera, or Stephen Waldman, or Valeria Spills Anderson.
I'd like to appoint Mayor Rory.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
The next one is Fitzpatrick, regular appointment, Stephen Waldman, Waldman, or...
I'd like to appoint Stephen Waldman.
Is there a second?
Duncan.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
So, next one is Mr. Merker, it's a student appointment. Kelsey Kershaw is currently on there as a student, and that's the only student person, she's serving as a student.
Let's move forward.
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion is unanimous. The next one, we have applicant Valencia Spills Anderson. I have an alternate, but Commissioner Casello, you have a regular appointment. If you want to, you're up, if you want to do a regular, you can appoint her as a regular.
I'd like to put her name and nomination.
Is there a second?
Second.
Valencia Spills Anderson.
Anderson.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Library Board, Commissioner Merker, regular appointment, Valerie Pleasanton, who is currently on the board.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Hay, you have a regular, Lori Sulser is currently a board member.
Lori Sulser?
Yeah.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you have a regular, Barbara Weinberg, who's currently on the board, would like to be reappointed.
So moved, Barbara Weinberg.
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Rec and Parks Board, Commissioner Hay, you have a regular, currently on, Charles Kanter is currently on there.
So moved.
Kanter, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you have a regular, Elizabeth Pierce Rowe, who is currently, I believe she might be the chair of that board, but she's currently on the board.
So moved.
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion is unanimous. Planning and Development Board, Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you have a regular appointment, James Brake, David Katz, Brian Miller, Ryan Wesler, they're all current members.
I'd like to appoint Brian Miller.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Casello, you have the next one, regular appointment.
I'd like to appoint David Katz.
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. The next one is myself, it's a regular appointment, James Brake.
Second.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Mr. Merker, you have the next one, Ryan Wesler.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Merker, you have another regular appointment, there's two people that have asked to be on there, one's Alicia Macon and Stephen Palerno, but just a minute, I think they both want to be alternates. So myself and Vice Mayor Hay have alternate appointments to that board, yours is a regular, and I think they've both asked for alternates, so I would appoint Alicia Macon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous.
And I would appoint Stephen Palermo.
Palermo, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Senior Advisory Board, Fitzpatrick, regular, Lillian Brazuzi.
I'll point Lillian Brazuzi.
Have most second all in favor.
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Casello, you have a regular, and there's another person, Floyd Zonstein is applied.
I nominate Floyd.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Takes the Veterans Advisory Commission, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Hay, you have a regular.
Thomas Kaizo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have most, all in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Fitzpatrick, regular, Stuart Preston.
I'll point Stuart Preston.
Is there a second? There's all in favor?
Aye.
So, Mr. Casello, you have a regular, Bridget Roberts is on there.
Bridget Roberts?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion unanimous. Commissioner Merker, you have an alternate, and Robert Manson has requested to be an alternate, he is an alternate already.
So moved.
Robert Manson, there's second all in favor.
Aye.
And I have an alternate, Stanley Gavlik.
Second.
Have a second all in favor.
Aye.
I show the motion is unanimous. I believe that completes that. Very good. That takes us to consent. Yes, and we have one item that's pulled from consent, item B.
No, just...
Yeah, yeah, and that's approved the Recreation Parks Department Strategic Plan. I believe our Director Wally Majors would like to make a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, we seek your approval tonight for our department's 2013-2017 strategic plan, and we just wanted to very briefly show you a presentation regarding how we developed our plan. Slide. In essence, the commission is certainly very familiar in regards to why we do strategic planning, but in essence, in any organization, it's important that the people within that organization understand in what direction we want to go in, and how do we get there. And that's basically the essence of any strategic plan. Slide. We did a lot of analysis of the things that we do in our department, not only in terms of our programs, but also of our facilities, how we communicate with each other, how we work together, and how we deliver our services to our community. And in essence, we really wanted to make sure that we understand very clearly our strengths, our weaknesses, and to really make sure that we have an action plan that's fully reflective of those challenges that we have towards accomplishing the items that are part of our plan. Slide. In terms of the analysis that we conducted, some examples of those would be, for example, a competitive analysis, where staff contacts all the other service providers in our community that deliver recreation services, like the YMCA, the county, the Jewish Community Centers, to really get a sense of how we compare to those other organizations. We do an internal SWOT analysis to really get a sense of what our strengths are, our weaknesses, our opportunities, our threats that are out there. And then the commission is probably still familiar with our needs assessment that we recently conducted and completed. So in essence, that will give us a very strong guide to take us into the next five years in terms of how we work in our department. Slide. We really made it a point for this plan to involve all of our staff. That was a little different than what, the way we had done it in the past. This was really a task that involved everybody in our department, and as such, we took a lot of time to really look at our department vision, and our department vision in regards to how does the staff that we work with see themselves in terms of why do we actually exist as a department, and how do we get there? Because without having a clear vision, when you're leading a group of people, quite honestly, it's very hard to keep them moving forward in the way that you want them to move. Next slide, please. So ultimately, one very important part of this process is to really get a sense of what our values are. Because if we have to work together as an organization, spend a lot of time at tables, meeting, discussing, strategizing, we have to make sure that we have some sense of what our values are as an internal organization. Then, next slide shows you what we felt and what we've got in terms of the feedback from our stakeholders in terms of our external values. These are values that, again, are related to the people that we serve, so again, that we have a sense that what we do is consistently within these values, these guidelines in terms of how we, again, deliver our services. Next slide, please. Ultimately, we play a very key role in the branding of our city. Our department staff are ambassadors for this, we embrace this concept, and we make sure that everybody in our department understands that everything we do is part of bringing a good branding image to our city. Next slide, please. And ultimately, this gets us to our goals, which over the next five years are going to deal with the reality that, quite honestly, we had a good, you know, fiscal year this year in terms of our budget, but, you know, our challenges are not in any way behind us. We know that going into the future, we really have to find ways to strengthen our financial performance as a department. We want to be a leader in what we do. We take great pride in being a nationally-accredited department, but we continue to strive to be the best. We want to really take our staff into account in terms of, we're only as good as the people we work with. That goes down to the parking attendants that the people meet when they come to our beach, to our upper-level staff that gets into, involved with some of the more strategic planning. But ultimately, we have to invest in our staff. We have to train them, we have to motivate them, and we have to find ways to make sure that they are consistent with the way we want to do things in our department. And ultimately, we want to build some, the community trust, the community loyalty, and we do that by doing a good job, and again, going beyond what they expect from us. And that's our plan, and we will be planning to accomplish that over the next five years with action items that will be updated annually. And we seek for your approval for this plan.
Any questions by the commission?
The only thing I'd like to say is not a question. I totally concur and agree with Wally Majors. Our beach is that important to who we are and what we are, and we're gifted that we have such a beautiful beach, and to maintain it is crucial for that reason. So, Wally, keep the job going.
I would just say, you know, we've only given you a brief moment to go through this, but it takes a lot of work and effort to put this strategic plan together, I understand that. And I want to say that your department and the people that work with you just do a great job, and we know you work very hard to accomplish such your plan and motion and accomplish those goals, so doing a great job, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you very much. So if we may have your approval on the plan?
Yes, does he need a motion?
So moved.
So, Mayor, second.
I have a motion of second to approve the strategic plan of the parks and rec, all in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion is unanimous.
Little amount of detail there.
Okay, that takes us to bids and purchases over a hundred thousand. We need to approve the one-year renewal of piggyback and bid for procurement of chemicals for the water treatment plants and outlined in the written report for December 2013, request for bid extensions and piggyback.
Pushing to approve?
Second.
Have most a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I show the motion is unanimous. Okay, that takes us down to item eleven on your agenda, and Considered of a Short Sale Request by Matthew Zeller.
Mayor, do you want a staff, a brief staff update on this?
Yes, please.
Nancy or Octavia? This is a follow-up to an item that was raised under public audience at our last meeting regarding our ship program and a request to, for a short sale. This staff is going to report to you on its recommendation and findings of the request, and the commission can take it from there.
Mayor, there's also a memorandum in the backup at page three-oh-three of the package from Octavia, and from myself, we worked together to put together this factual and chronological report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Nancy Byrne, Director of Development. Briefly, we've been approached by an applicant from our ship program who has run into some financial difficulty and is asking the city for relief through the means of a short sale. The city has policy and guidelines that we use when we approach... The city has policy and guidelines that we use when we approach these requests, which we get frequently from applicants, especially during the real estate downturn. We had quite a few of them come forward. So we use a filtering process to see if it's really truly a hardship, or, you know, there can be other factors that are motivating people to get out of properties, and that's part of what you have in the backup documentation, the research that staff has done on this particular case. We're presenting to you tonight some alternatives to making an exception to the policy. Staff has given you three alternatives and alternate ways that we could work with this particular applicant to help him out of this situation as opposed to making an exception to the policy. I can answer any questions you have on the backup, and I'm sure the city attorney can also assist you with this.
I just want to kind of reiterate a little bit in the backup here for the Commissioners, which you've probably seen, but allowing the short sale may be establishing a precedent for others that were assisted through the ship program to be able to benefit from the short sale policy while not having to comply with other city policies and ship program guidelines. And as an alternative, the city staff could refer Mr. Zeller to lenders who may be able to assist him in assessing equity out of his other two properties he co-owns to pay off the city's $30,000 mortgage. City could work with Mr. Zeller and the first mortgage holder to discuss a different repayment amount acceptable to the city. The new settlement amount would be brought back before the City Commission for approval. The city could take a security interest in one or more of Mr. Zeller's other properties he currently co-owns, allowing him to sell the unit under consideration. When this first came to us and I looked into it, I really wanted to go ahead and allow Mr. Zeller to do the short sale and see if we could work this out, because I know he's one of our own, want to see what I could do to assist him, but I sensed that I do really have concerns about establishing a precedent for others, you know, that were assisted through the ship program and how that would affect us on the long run. So just want to bring those to the attention of the Commission.
Now, I have a question, Nancy, please. I understand totally what the Mayor is saying. The only question I have is, can we, is it possible to take each case by itself? In other words, as the Mayor said, and he's one of ours, we want to help one of ours who's been there for us in his vocation and as a citizen of our city. So I lean towards helping him by voting yes. Are we officially setting a precedent, or can we say we're specifically, specifically going to vote on this case? And if another one comes up, if it deems, we'll vote on that specifically. So am I out of order, or am I logical?
I think you're going to find that the city attorney and I are both in agreement with this. I'm going to let Jim answer the question.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Nancy.
Jim's going to answer the question for you.
Let me make a couple of points in response to the issues that you've raised. First of all, the fact that the applicant is a city employee should make no difference. All applicants should come before you in initial fashion. Point of fact, I believe that in the event of an audit of the ship funds, that if the trend indicated that city employees were treated differently than non-city employees, that might be problematic for the city, and that might be a signal that we are not applying the standards equally across the board to all applicants. One other thing I wanted to note is, and this is at page 304 of the agenda package, it's in the report that I co-authored with Octavia, and by the way, I do thank her for pulling together all the information that was necessary. Because the applicant did not file the traditional application and provide information, staff had to dig for a lot of it, including the information on the bankruptcy. The bankruptcy that was referred to at the last Commission meeting was actually filed in 2011, and the applicant, Mr. Zeller, was discharged from that bankruptcy in February of 2012. So the issue of hardship would have been resolved, anybody entering into bankruptcy, of course, claims hardship. Once you get through the process and you're discharged, meaning most of your debts are extinguished, the issue of hardship should disappear in whole or in part, in most part. So that is an issue that was addressed at the last Commission meeting, and I wanted to give you the timeframe on the bankruptcy and the discharge from bankruptcy.
You're saying the idea that it was discharged in 2011?
February of 2012.
I'm sorry.
Applied for in 2011.
So you're saying that this is a different dimension, it's not part of that, and therefore it has to be judged on its merits?
On its merits. No single case that comes before you on this short sale issue really does stand alone. They are all interconnected, because at some point, the city may be in a position of having to defend the totality of how you address short sales, and that totality should reflect neutrality and consistency in the way that you do it. So you posed the question about whether each case stands alone, in my opinion, they do not.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Mr. Mayor? Right, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
In addition to what's already been said, as I looked at this, I just couldn't see the hardship. I mean, no one supports the law enforcement officers more than I do, but however, this is one that I just can't support. One of the items here talks about housing burden, and it's defined as when a home buyer housing expense exceeds 30% of the total household income. And as you look at his salary and his figures, it only comes up to 15%. And then if you were to add his now wife income, which has not been added in here, that 15% would go down even lower. Plus the fact that I understand that he resides now outside the city, and I believe the policy states that you must live within that property, which is a violation of our policy. Also, he is supposedly renting that particular facility, location, and he did not get what they call a BTR, which is a business tax receipt, which is another violation of our city code. So I just don't see the hardship, and really, when you, as was pointed out, when you file bankruptcy, that's meant to relieve a person from a debt burden. So you think about it, he could not have exited bankruptcy with the same hardship that he went into it with. So again, I don't see the hardship, because the bankruptcy discharge or extinguishes that. So based on the information on the background that I've read, I just cannot support the short sale in this particular case.
Ms. Casello?
Just a quick question. I think when this was first brought to us, the settlement figure was 2,600, now it's 3,000. Is that a number that's negotiable, or is that something that?
Hang on a second. I don't have the latest information on that.
Yeah, that number is driven by the mortgage holder in front of the city, you know, that they're prepared to do a transaction, but they're trying to reduce the amount that the city would be paid, if anything. I consider that number to be negotiable.
It is negotiable.
Amount was $30,000 for that, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
And is it a 10% where the 3,000 came from? Or?
Whatever fee the bank feels that they're willing to give in negotiating the sale on the short sale.
Octavia Schrock, Community Development Manager. When we developed the short sale policy, it was based on the balance of the outstanding mortgage, and we reviewed short sale policies throughout the state when we arrived at policy.
So is it a 10% number for the policy, or is it?
It's calculated on a percentage of the outstanding balances that's due, that's owed.
And that percentage can fluctuate.
It can fluctuate.
Thank you.
Fitzpatrick, do you have anything?
Sure. One of the things that bothered me about this case was Jim DePaul used to be, I think, a reporter for Palm Beach Post years ago, Sun Sentinel.
Sentinel, I think, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, I've known him a long time, he's basically a good guy, but it was kind of bothering me that he kind of was seeing me like trying to do an end run and hijack the meeting for like 10 minutes, and I don't think, you know, I hate to encourage that kind of behavior for one thing. And then the second thing is, we're stewards of the, you know, a lot of money here, ship money and taxes and everything else, and you have to treat it like it's your own money and your own. So I don't know everything about ship, but we have staff that that's what they do, so I think we should trust staff, follow their recommendation.
Yeah, I will say that I have real concern, because it is ship money, and we get audited on that, and then they would audit us and say, you know, were we properly running the right way we're supposed to do with ship money? So I have a concern there, and so I guess where I'm at, I wanted to deny the request for the short sale, but ask the city to work with Mr. Zeller on the other three alternatives, if there was some way else we can help him out. Second?
Is that something we?
I'll make an emotion.
Excuse me a second.
Motion and a second?
I'm sorry. The second part of what the Mayor said, that could be part of this motion in the sense of saying, let's look into.
I made that as part of the motion, the other three alternatives to try and help him. That was part of the motion.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Hay, any questions?
No, no. I was going to make that motion.
There's a motion and a second.
You still have the gavel, so, yeah, it's all right.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. You want to do it, go ahead.
Go ahead, you make that motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion that he just made.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion unanimous.
Thank you. We were just debating who. The debate motions. Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay. Under new, next is new business, review the action of the annual performance evaluation of the city manager.
How do we start?
If you'll jump in if you want.
I'd love to.
Go ahead.
It goes like this. Thank goodness, thank God, we're that lucky to have Mrs. Laurie. Personally, obviously, I'm only speaking for myself. Laurie, I thank you for all the help you've given me as the city commissioner, and I can't say anything but, what is it, the highest star is a five-star rating? Let's make her a six, and that's what I feel.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
I don't consider myself the world's best judge of character, and she, you know, she presents well and looks good to me, but how can you really tell, I wonder? But this isn't going well. But, you know, talking to a lot of other staff who work with her, and it's pretty much unanimous that what you see is what you get, and it's all positive. So she deserves good accolades.
And that's a good compliment from Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
And may I comment on that? Commissioner Fitzpatrick, you say sometimes I have a way with words. I think you have tonight surpassed my way.
Vice Mayor Hay?
No, I just wanted to say that Laurie, being our full-time city manager, was one of the highlights of my tenure on this city council. Thank you. So it only goes without saying that I have high regard for her professionalism and her ease of talking to and her tenacity in getting the job done. If I had any criticism of Laurie would be the fact that she needs to learn how to go home sometime. She after putting in 10-plus hours, you will still see her attending community meetings, you still see her putting in extra hours to get the job done. And I put that as part of my evaluation, because I do want to see her. I know she is so engaged in her work, but sometimes you got to learn how to back off and take some time to be with your family, take some time to relax, because too much work brings on stress, and that stress begin to work on parts of your body that you didn't know you had. So I just want to say to Laurie that you need to learn how to cool your jets.
Sir, taking you up on that in about a week.
Okay, very good. So enjoy yourself, keep up the good works, and we got the best city manager in the area.
Ms. Casello, would you like to come in on the city manager's?
I'm sure I didn't hear anything bad when I was left the room. I just like to comment, I think that to the last man up here, I think that we're very blessed to have Laurie as a city manager. It's amazing how she's taken from where this commission was a year and a half ago, a couple of years ago, and you have three newly-elected commissioners, greenhorns if you will, and how she's kind of steadied the ship here and given us direction, information to make informed decisions, and treating us all equal, like we've been here, you know, like we were seasoned vets, and I applaud her for that. The communications with Laurie is unbelievable. There's not a thing that goes in the city that it's not shared with the Commissioners. I can tell you that. If you, any incidents that I needed in my district taken care of, she's been on it with just a phone call, it's been outstanding, and it makes you look, it actually makes you look good. So, you know, I guess the question is not, you know, is she a good city manager? She's an outstanding city manager. I've worked with a lot of people in leadership positions, and I can tell you, Laurie, you are a leader. Thank you.
I would just say that I've read all of the evaluations, and all of you rated her outstanding, and I totally agree. I think she's done a fantastic job. The things she's accomplished is, are incredible. We have several pages of things she's accomplished just since taking over last year, would take some time to go through them all, but just outstanding thing, both internal and outside the city with the community. Laurie is the city manager for in excess of 7,000 employees, I believe, is that correct?
We have 750.
700, I have 7,000, 750 employees.
Feels like 7,000.
Which is, which is, which I think is a lot. I mean, she's responsible for them on a daily basis, she's responsible for what this city produces on a daily basis. I think she's done outstanding job. She's currently at $165,000. I have the salaries for about 13 city managers around us here. Of those 13, seven of them at least are in the $200,000 range, but I think that she's done a good job. Our city employees, we were able to scrape enough to give a 3% increase to everybody pretty much across the board here. However, the city manager, I think, is, you're talking about the person that runs all of those employees and makes sure that this city is operating effectively on a daily basis. And so I would not, I would, I could, I could go at least for a 6% increase for the city manager. She's at 165. A 6% would be about 9,900 would bring her to 174.9, which is close to a $10,000 raise, and that's just something I'd throw out there. I'm open to discussion.
May I bring up a point?
Sure.
Laurie? Laurie, where are you? Hi, you're on the other side of the table. You ready? Here it goes. I concur with the Mayor and the rest of the Commissioners, but, and I ask you the question, and I don't, I, it's a tough question I'm going to ask. Laurie, are we the city in a position right now to surpass the increase that? And, I'm sorry, and the reason I bring that up is... I'm sorry. And the reason I bring that up is, if my memory is right, in the year 2012, you were given a raise. And I would very much like to go along with the mayor, but I'm asking you, looking in the eye at this point, is it realistic to do it?
We calculated salaries. We calculated 3% across the board for all employees, and that's what's currently budgeted, currently budgeted.
My personal opinion is, is that I'd like to keep it that way. And if all goes well next year, I want to see a consistency of growth in this city. I don't want to see any of, I don't want to see ourselves in the red in every area. And I affectionately and intellectually and professionally want to give Laurie the extra raise, but I want to see another year. And since she is getting a raise, and since she, she had an increase at the end, I think it was 2012, if my memory is right, then I think it's proper to keep it the way it is, the 3%.
Vice Mayor?
It's very interesting that the numbers that you came up with, because when I looked at the numbers, I had in my mind between 5% to 7%. And you came up with 6%, and that's absolutely amazing. I certainly can go along with that. I feel, again, that she is the leader. And favor is not fair. Had it not been for her leadership, we wouldn't be where we are now. So, I think it deserves a merit of 6%. And that's what I will support.
So, is, you know, the elephant in the room here is the 3%. We're still in negotiations with some of our unions. We cannot sit up here and give out 6% raises, in my opinion. She's, it's well deserved. Don't get me wrong. I'm not going to. But, we cannot tell our employees that 3% is all we have to give. And then we sit up here and say 6%, 7%, whatever it is. I have a proposal. My proposal is, we stick with the 3%. And under her contract, under additional benefits, 11.3, it goes, the city will pay an amount equal to 8% of the city manager's base salary or $13,200 annually, whichever is less into her ICMA, her retirement fund. My proposal is to have that amended, and the city will pay an amount equal to 10% of the city manager's base salary or 13.2, 13.2,000 annually, whichever is changing less to more into her ICMA. So, my proposal is 3% raise, and we increase her retirement to 10%.
I agree with Joe and Commissioner Merker in that what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If, if, we should stick with a policy and keep it. I mean, so, I agree with that. But, increasing, you know, giving a 3% raise and then increasing another benefit, I don't, I can't agree with that because that's just a backdoor raise. So, I say the 3%. And basically, when we're negotiating with the unions, this recently, it's been 3% and hold line on other benefits and issues. So, I would support 3%, but I wouldn't support additional benefits.
I would just say, you know, when you talk about 3%, you're talking about 3% to a large group of people. So, you're talking maybe a half a million dollars or a million dollars, even higher than that. Here, we're talking about the manager that controls everything. We're talking about one person, that without them, where would you be? And you're only talking about $10,000, not a million or $2 million. So, when the 3% is because you're giving that raise to so many people, it gets you up into the millions. This, there, we're talking about one person that is responsible for everything, every day, 24 hours a day. So, 6% is not unusual, even if you look out in the private community, you'd find that same thing. The man in charge, the CEO, he's responsible for everything. His increase is much bigger than the general employees, because when you give it to everybody, that goes into the millions.
That's, I believe, I believe that's part of what's happening, the problem in our country, that the select few, and this is not referring specifically to Laurie, but that's what the problem in this country is, the select few get such an outstanding raise continuously. If it isn't for the mass, the hard-working mass, the employees, then the leader would not look good. I believe Laurie deserves more than the 3%. But again, I reiterate, and to add it on to a pension, one of the biggest problems in the country is the pension plans. If you investigate and look into the pensions today, they're ridiculous. So, I feel we had a nice year economically, financially, stability-wise. Let's keep it that way. Next year is another year. Hopefully, the city will be in good graces, and we can give Laurie, and hopefully, the other city employees, more of a raise. Stability is what we need in this city right now. And surpassing that is not, is not economically sound.
Well, let me just add my last final comment, then. I can tell you that if you want to give her 3% raise, you're talking less than $5,000. I really think that her performance requires a lot more than that. And that doesn't even bring her near to most of the other managers around us that are much more than that. And I don't know that they've performed to the capability she has. So, I just think that to do a 3% is almost-
And I'd like to comment.
And for you to, for you to rate her as high as you have, and then not, and then justify that, I just, I'm really, I'm still talking, please.
Okay, go right ahead.
I didn't interrupt you. So, I really feel like, I really would feel bad if you can't get over 3%. I just think she's earned it.
I'd like to, I'd like to comment on that. I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think I'm thinking common sense. The idea to reward when you don't have, or you're not sure going into the next year if you're in the black or the red, that's not good business. We had a nice year. I want to see a second year, nice also. And then I could look Laurie in the face or anybody else as an employee and say, this is business sound. This is the right way. It's easy, it's easy to, it's easy to, how should I make it simple and to the point, it's easy to pick out one person. I think we have to look at the city as a whole. And to individualize it, I think is totally unprofessional, incorrect, and it's not good financially for the city or the morale of the other employees.
Vice Mayor?
When we were on the negative cloud hanging over our head for 18 months, and we had the newspapers on our back, we had people not wanting to come to our city, we had developers turning up their nose at us. There was a lot of things that was going on in our city that was not good for us. Laurie stepped in, along with myself and others, to turn things around. And I believe that's why she got such a high evaluation. Now, I looked at it in terms of the 5% to 7%. I hear what my colleagues are saying, and I would be willing to go along with a 5%, but that's my minimum, from the way I see it, based on what she's done. And I know she's not asking for anything. She'll be happy to stay where she is. But when I look at all the other mayors in the area and see how their salaries are so, city manager, when I look at the city manager and see how their salaries are so much higher than Laurie, I think it just makes common sense to try to bring her up into comparison to the others in this area whose populations are not nearly what the population of Boynton is. We're talking 70,000 people, and you got some cities are half that, but are making them a lot more than what she's making. So, I just feel, based on her performance and what she has brought us through, merits a, at least a 5% increase.
Fitzpatrick?
A couple of points. First of all, these other city managers we're comparing with, how long have they been in office or in position? I mean, if they've been there 10 or 15 years, then yes, they should be making more. And a lot of those increases came at a time when there was a bubble, when the property values were based on fantasy. And, and those that are higher also have two and three times the tax base of Boynton Beach. So, the reality is, we don't have as much money as, as some of those municipalities that we're comparing with. And in, she is, I believe, the highest-paid employee in the city, so her 3% is significantly more than a firefighter's or police or blue-collar's 3%. So, in real dollars, she is, will get more money anyway it's accounted for. But at 2:00 AM, the most important person in this city is the police officers pulling somebody over. And, and they want 7% or better. And I think it'll go bad and be regarded as pretty hypocrisy if we don't treat everybody equal.
Putting the percentages aside, I would like to have under her additional benefits, that 11.3, where it says the city will pay an amount equal to 8% of the city manager's base salary or 13.2, 13,200 annually, whichever is less into the, into the retirement. I would like to change that word "less" to "more," because whatever raise we give her, her retirement will always stay the same. It'll never go past 13.2. So, what I'd like to change that, I refer that to our law department, if that's something that can be done.
Mr. Mayor?
That's a question. I got a question on the floor, please.
Okay.
City Attorney, he wanted to know if that's possible.
Could make that modification in terminology. Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. Can I make, can I put that out there in a form of a motion, or?
Well, let's wait.
Okay.
A little more discussion, and I'll ask for a motion.
I emphatically disagree with that. As I'm reiterating, restating is the biggest problem in city, in the states, in the country, is the definition, the benefits of pensions. I'm not here to change, but I am against, I am against the modification of increasing a pension in this way, specifically for one individual. As I stated, and I'll repeat continuously, Laurie deserves it. No ifs, ands, or buts. But what comes first, what comes first, is the people of this city and the running of this city. And just because we had one good year doesn't mean that's how you ruin things. Most businesses, when they start, they start with a three-to-five-year plan. Yes, Boynton Beach has been around a lot longer, but we went through a very bad time. We're giving an increase. Let's make sure that next year is in the red, in the black, not in the red, and there's not more lawsuits, more expenses, et cetera, et cetera. I find it totally absurd when the city is smiling, not laughing, but smiling, to give raises above that at this point.
Okay. There's no other discussion. The chair is open for a motion.
I move we give the city manager 3%.
Second?
A motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I, I'd like to put a motion out there that we change the word in her defined benefits, additional benefits, from less to more. I don't care what the, what the final percentage raise is, but I think whatever it is, it should reflect it into her retirement account. And if we keep it at less, it'll never change.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? There's an alternative motion to, as stated by Commissioner Casello. Is there a second to that?
Mayor, I'm not sure. It's an alternate motion. I think that's an amendment to the main motion.
Not, not accepted by the maker.
The motioner does not accept that. So, you have to make that as a separate motion.
I put that forward as a motion.
Is that one on the floor? Yeah, there's all on the floor.
Yeah, motion on the floor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to 3% increase and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Show the motion passes three to two.
Three to two.
Now that you want to make an addition-
I'd like to put that as a motion, that we change the word "less" to "more" into the ICMA retirement.
A second to that? Motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, that's it. Discussion of revision of ordinance 07004 to modify the commandments of terms for board appointees from December to April to coincide with the city election sequence. Commissioner Merker, I believe you asked that.
Yes, I did. Really, all I'm saying is that appointments should be made by the elected officials that are on the board and recently elected. To push through appointments when you have an election this coming year, I disagree. I think you elect a new commissioners, which will be either Mr. Casello or Mr. McCray, as an example. Let it be that when they're reelected, plus the other three, two commissioners and mayor vote in the new year, because they were just elected. To look at the past when people are leaving, doesn't make sense to me. And I don't know anywhere else, personally, I could be wrong, but I don't know anywhere else that the newly-elected officials don't get the opportunity to vote on appointments in a city. And that's why I brought this up. And obviously, I like discussion.
But he wished the-
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
When you have new board members come on, on this city commission, in my opinion, the way I see it, they have enough challenge trying to get themselves up to speed as to what's going on. I can only use myself as an example. I took, there was a learning curve when I first came on board. And I think it is for most who are coming the first time around, being elected. And trying to balance everything is, is a full-time job per se. So, I think if you look at the time after the election, which is in March, until the time that we appoint, I think the commissioners at that time will have more experience under their belt. They will understand better what the various committees are all about. They have an opportunity to visit some of the meetings and get familiarized with those meetings and what's really happening, talking to some of the people, which I did, and to getting to know the people and what that committee is all about. Then, it's time to make your appointment. Not to new people who are just coming onboard, who really don't know many times what's really, what's really going on, to make those kinds of appointments. Because I think the committees in this city are very important. And as we set up here, we need to be well-informed as to what they're all about, and then vote on who should serve on those boards. So, I'm satisfied the way it is.
I agree with the Vice Mayor's comments, and I don't see any reason to change. Seems to be working fine to me. I don't know why we change it. Any other comments?
Yes, I'd like to comment again. I call it the respect of the people. The people just voted for, just vote, vote this year for new people. If there's a change of government, then obviously, they weren't happy. If they're, if it's the same, well, then it will stay the same course. So, it's the people that I'm looking at. They're the ones that choose the people. They're the ones that want the board members, let alone our decisions, to be made by ourselves. So, to look back and use the excuse of the past, well, these gentlemen up here, when I brought up unlimited term limits, they want the term limits, they want the change. So, I'm just going along with it in a different thought, in the sense, okay, we got new people. We got new people. We're gonna have new people on boards, and that's what the people are asking for. That's my interpretation.
Okay, that's, any other discussion? Anybody want to make a motion to anything of this?
I move that we change it, as stated in the paperwork, that the new commissioners, whomever they are, get a choice to vote for the new board members. whomever they are, get a choice to vote for the new board members. It's common sense.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Moves this to item 13, Proposed Ordinance Number 13-036, second reading in public hearing. Turn it over to City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida repealing Part Two, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Six, Section 2-102 through 2-106 of the City's Code of Ordinances, Ordinance 90-79, which created the City of Boynton Beach Community Relations Board, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
This is proposed ordinance number 13-036 on second reading in public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Vice Mayor Hay?
Aye.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Vote is 5-0.
Brand promise, breeze into Boynton Beach, America's gateway to the Gulf Stream. We stand adjourned.